Carmen, is your system working properly over there?
Yeah.
Meeting up there in the Los Angeles.
All right, did they push over the N C? Oh, yeah, all the females.
Play tussies with their butt.
Do the invite for that?
All right.
I'll send it to you.
All right, all right.
Maybe I missed.
It's kind of a small spot.
Oh, it's terrible right there. I wish they could move it out a little bit.
Sorry, hear about it.
Hey, can you?
Yeah, you know what, I think, I think his wife said something to me about it, but like a month ago.
Hey, Bob.
Greetings, how are you?
See you, John.
Forgive me if I try to quote.
Just out of habit, twenty one years.
Right.
But I played, there was no meeting, but I, I won't make that. He thought he went. Everybody good to go?
I kind of just want to remind everybody, um, Excel Energy is, has a planned outage on Thursday, the twenty fourth, from midnight until three A M, pretty much from McDonald's to fifteen.
Wow.
So it's going to be three hours of no power. They're calling people individually. I received the call here today. So we got an email and then Excel is notifying every, but every address they have listed that's going to be affected by the outage.
Regardless of the temperature.
Pardon?
Regardless of the temperature.
Yeah, it's just a planned outage. They're doing something, they're like replacing a pole, a power pole. That's why.
Gotcha, from like midnight till three in the morning, most of the town.
Yep, very much.
All right, wow. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, March twenty first work session, twenty twenty two. There will be only four council members tonight. I know that Scott Fennell and Lisa had already planned not to be here. And Jimmy Clark is out on the call, so it'll just be the four of us. And looks like we're going to start with the downtown marketplace, and I think Jonathan is doing a double duty while on vacation. There actually, Jared's going to handle this one.
Oh, sorry about that.
And then Jonathan will handle the parking one.
Oh, okay, very good.
All right, thank you very much. So before this evening is a memo discussing the outdoor operations at Minor Street for the summer. So the past couple of years, uh, the Minor Street or the three blocks of downtown has been blocked off and there's been encroachment agreements that have been signed with the city with all the various liquor license holders, not quite all, I guess, but a number of them to be able to set up locations out in the street. So the authorization from the state to allow for that action to occur is going to expire here in May. The city, city staff in conjunction with the Economic Recovery Task Force has been looking into some ways that we can still have a very similar setup and very similar operation. So Attorney Berry has provided a memo that goes in conjunction with my memo that talks about one in particular. It's called a communal outdoor dining area, or what we're referring to as a C O D A. So the, the C O D A is something that the state legislature did put into effect, and it does not have a sunset similar to what we've been operating in in the past. So what a C O D A does is it would allow for a minimum of two liquor license holders to utilize an area, and that area would be defined by the city in conjunction with the liquor license holders to allow for outdoor liquor consumption, et cetera. So we've worked with the, uh, many of the downtown businesses, and they're very interested in having a similar setup to last year. This would allow that to occur. But this would also, if we so choose, if the city council desires, could also be expanded. And we, uh, staff has talked with the business leaders and liquor license holders about possibly expanding the area in, uh, for certain events. So if we have a concert out in an area, you potentially, we, uh, the thought is we could alter the premise and allow for people to take their beverage to that, uh, to that concert. So, um, there's a few different events that, uh, they're being compiled into a list. I do not have that list yet, but I'll be bringing that, uh, before you in the future. In order to do this, what is required is first of all, an ordinance from the city authorizing a C O D A. Attorney Berry will, uh, who is drafting that ordinance and intends to have that on, uh, Monday night's agenda for first reading. Second reading would come before you, um, if you so desire to before with it, would come before you in mid to late April. Uh, a couple of things of notes in regards to the C O D A. The, basically, there's joint responsibility of the liquor licensees to, uh, there's joint liability for them. So in the event that we do have an issue, if it can be traced back to one license holder, they can be disciplined per our liquor, uh, current liquor code. If it cannot, then under the rules of the C O D A, technically, everyone could be disciplined under, under the legislation. We've talked about this quite a bit with the, uh, local businesses, and that's one of the reasons why they'd rather stay in kind of their confined spaces and maybe only look to do, uh, larger or have a little more freedom during events rather than at all points in, in the summer. Uh, let's see, a couple other items in regards to this too. Must be within a thousand feet. All of Minor Street, the three blocks are all within a thousand feet of one another, so that's not a problem. And there's one thing in particular I wanted to get to. Oh, yes, they, uh, the liquor license holders have to submit a security and control plan to the city, and then it goes to the state as well for approval. So it's not just simply pass an ordinance and, and move on, it's, we have to have rules of, of the C O D A to be abided by. And so that will be coming, uh, before you, most likely, along with the second reading of the ordinance in, uh, late-ish April. Uh, with that, I'd ask if Attorney Berry has any, uh, comments or would like to add anything? She's over there, behind. And potentially frozen.
I think she's frozen.
Okay, well, I would ask for questions then.
I, I do have a couple. Um, when you started speaking, you said that if these guys, if the businesses that have liquor licenses were going into it together, they would be grouped in twos?
So, no, there has to be a minimum of two liquor license holders to establish the.
Okay, so you already have that. Okay, gotcha.
We definitely have a few more than that there, interesting.
Right, I've, I've been watching the economic meetings. I definitely know who is worried and who's not. So, uh, if, what, what is the downside, I guess? And it sounds like more people want to be in the C O D A than not. But what is the downside of not being in a C O D A? What is the, I mean, could we not still allow for like the whole block to have a liquor license if we had a band or a big party out there? Could we, could we, they not have a special permit to do that?
So if I'm not mistaken, we could do a special event, but we're, we'd rather not have three, five months of special event licenses.
No, I was meaning that just for, for particular events, not for like a whole month, you know, month's long thing.
Yeah, so our, our, um, plan of action right now is that, uh, the C O D A would be pretty regulated so that you're really only in your spaces. However, eh, even though the C O D A would still, we'd have to draw the boundaries that are larger than that, the security plan would talk about being in your spaces. Except for on the dates that we want to do events. So whether that's the, you know, weekly concert series, Fourth of July, something of that nature, then, um, the security plan can call out, uh, different rules for those events. And my thought anyway was to include, uh, with the security plan, a list of those events that could potentially be amended from time to time. I see John has his hand.
Yeah, I was just going to call on Jonathan.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, one of the things that happens at special events is that you can apply for a liquor license, but you are supposed to have tips-trained staff to be serving alcohol at those events. And while that hasn't necessarily been a challenge, it can be a challenge, and we don't offer training or anything like that. So by using this plan that Jared has designed with Carmen, what it will let us do is make sure that liquor sales go through people who do have the training to make sure they do it and do it on a frequent basis. So that when we have special events, we don't need to have people who aren't used to serving and looking for signs of over-serving and doing it in the park and all that kind of stuff. It will let us just kind of function a little bit more, um, holistically. And then also, it just promotes our businesses, um, liquor sales at our businesses where they, they typically occur instead of at Citizens Park.
Thanks, John.
I, I haven't seen that, but. Any other questions?
Yes, so, uh, how do you go to control people who are over served?
So that will be the, uh.
No, I mean, people can point fingers, well, easily, if they're not, you know, one establishment.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, and I think that's one of the reasons why the, uh, liquor license holders were really concerned about maintaining just a small area, as was done in the past. Well, I call it small, it's not that small, but their, uh, area that's fenced off, roped off. Because they are concerned with that. In a special event, that's a very good question. I believe that you would still have to go back to one of those liquor holders to purchase your next beverage, and their trained staff would have to, you know, make that, that call and decide whether or not they feel that somebody is, you know, showing signs of being over served.
And they could bring your own bottle.
Uh, that is not my intent.
I'm just saying, that's people are going to try to do that.
Try to do what? Bring their, do what?
Bring your own bottle. Bring a bottle so you can, or go to, go get a glass and then just.
And Jared, uh, as, as far as like looking at somebody physically to try to establish if they've already, or, you know, maybe, uh, beyond needing another drink, but some of the establishments were talking about having their own cups.
Yes.
You know, so.
I was just going to say, that's a great idea.
Yeah, and, and that, that came from them.
Well, it also makes sense because if they have some sort of uniformity in the cups, because I'm all about not wasting those solo cups, they make me nuts. And I'm sure John doesn't want to see them laying in the garbage can, but if you were able to bring them back and people can reuse them, because those dirty ones can be reused. And there's no smashing dust. But if it's like this guy has a Tommyknockers thing or, you know, so and so's, or, sorry, Tommyknockers, I wasn't calling you out. Um, but anybody's, it would indicate that perhaps he's been, you know.
Right.
Tommyknocked. Tommyknockered.
So the, each business will have to, um, you know, maintain their insurance. We don't believe that it will be much in the way of, of difference from what they already have, but they will have to contact their insurance providers. And same, you know, the municipal insurance, um, I, we already allow for, uh, some alcohol sales on our streets. And so I don't believe, uh, that there'd be much in the way of expansion of it.
Jonathan, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just had one more note. Is, one of the things that we've been talking about with the business owners is that there's a legal aspect to this, and then there's a policy aspect. The legal aspect is the establishment of the C O D A. The policy aspect is how we use it. So for all intents and purposes, it doesn't have to look different than it has. People are already not allowed to bring alcohol from an outside place, like from buying it and bringing it onto the street or into an establishment. Those rules would continue, and what we intend is, is to try to make sure that our city policy is at the direction that city council and the business owners believe is the most appropriate to make sure that people stay safe. So, you know, all of those areas have pretty good, uh, that's one of the benefits to them is that everybody has a pretty good understanding of what is required to keep people safe and what they feel comfortable with. This just makes sure that they can continue their operations on a legal level, and then from a policy standpoint, we just need to support uh, the people on the street that are making those decisions and make sure they have the tools they need. Um, whether that's a rope or a sign or whatever it is to, um, in the security plan that makes their, their establishment work.
Right. I do believe that signage would be important, important, uh, at the entrances to the area. And then, uh, this can also be done on a trial basis. We can kind of test it out, see if we have, you know, issues with the expanded events, uh, events uses, and if we do, then we can, we can tweak that plan. But I do think that this is the best way to move forward with, uh, allowing us to do something similar to last year. If, if the event part gets, you know, reimagined, that, that can happen too. Yep.
Do we have an option if, under this program, to allow them, if we wanted to, to buy a beer at here and walk up and down the street with it? Is there an option like that?
Uh, if, so, if the board so chooses, yes.
Okay, the reason I ask is, uh, last few weeks, I, well, Saturday, I was in Arvada at the Old Town, and during the prior week, I was in several Old Town locations, but I'll keep the conversations to Arvada right now. If I'm not mistaken, they were within a guided area, which was a block, or at least a couple of blocks allowed to walk with their, with their beverage, their all beverage. What that does, because we're just restricting, we're talking about liquor license and what the people want with, that, that have a liquor license. The other retailers would have more of an opportunity, an exposure to these people if they're walking the distance to go into their shops and, and, and purchase items. So that's something I would like to consider, because what I noticed in Arvada, that's exactly what was happening. People were walking. Now, with that said, the, the way they had it roped off, I mean, no cars can come down the street, it was very permanent.
I think it is permanent.
It is permanent, and, and, and I guess I'll introduce this soon as well. All the, um, Old Towns that I went to, oh god, how can I say this, were, uh, cut above what we have, or what we could, but what we could have is like some of these others. They were outstanding, and I, I, through ours, uh, Saturday, and, and, I mean, Sunday, and it, it's just lacking something compared to the others. And I, I like, not at this particular point, but talking how we can upgrade our downtown appearance. And a lot of them, and I know last year I brought up, and it was uh, shot down or not considered as, oh, they all had lights. The little lights all looked very decorative. And, um, they weren't connected to the building. Somehow they connected either to their light posts or, but it was, it was, it was just outstanding. Morrison, Lafayette, um, Arvada, I was at several, and, uh, I wasn't drinking, I was busy, I was in business, but I, I took note while I was there, and I just thought some, in the future, we should take a look at that once we get past this point.
Oh, absolutely, I appreciate those comments. We, um, certainly are looking forward and looking for ways to better implement the, uh, downtown master plan. And the master plan does talk about, uh, some of those items, so I'm glad you enjoyed yourself in those locations.
Well, I was working, and, and I went through places on purpose for those very near, uh, just observed, they were all, they were all very nicely built, and they were, and, uh, some of the places like Lafayette would be an area that had, uh, maybe as much snow as we did, but their streets were totally clean. I know here it's hard, but the way we had the parking, so that, that contributed to niceness as well. So, you know, and, and when we blocked it all off, and we did that all year round, I'm sure we would be able to remove the stall, right, John? Maybe, but I mean, that was part of why ours didn't look as well as the others, and, and that's, that's, you know, that's the environment, that's nature. Uh, and the way we have the parking set up, but, uh, it was, it was, it was an eye-opener to watch some of these places.
And, uh, in regards to your, uh, I guess, I'm not sure if it was question or comment right now, uh, about getting a beer at one location or, or beverage at one location, walking up and down the street. This program can do that. The business owners were not, were a little, they were a little more interested on trying a trial basis for events first, prior to, to allowing, uh, that free flow, just to see how it operated. They're, they want to be a, um, a little more cautious and do more of an incremental.
When you say the business owners, are you talking about the people who sell to others as well, or are you just talking about the liquor holders?
Uh, predominantly, those were the liquor license holders.
Yeah, I think we should include, in this conversation, some of the retailers. Because they only spend a certain amount of time, if I remember right. Uh, last year, the gentleman that handles our parking had a time period of how long the average parking was. That was slightly under three hours, if I remember right with it. So if they're, if they're stationed in a place to drink a beer or two, that's going to take away the time from them, you know. So I'm trying to consider all of this as people in my comments, and that's all they are is comments.
No, and I, I appreciate that. This would also allow you to, um, be able to, eh, you know, if it was broad, or it would allow you to go out, throw up some bags or something like that. And give you a little more flexibility.
Well, I agree with, all right, I'm just going to counterpoint to you, is because these guys are the ones that are like subsidizing the insurance for this whole gig, and their reputations are sort of on the line, I'm going to give them a little bit of a leg up on making the decision, decision on how it really looks, simply because they are, they're going to be the police of it on the street.
But that may eliminate our income from sales tax.
No, I, I don't, I, no, by no stretch of the imagination, do I want to take any business away from anybody else, because I think drunk people are going to spend a lot of money. I let them do it, but, um, but they, we want, we want them to do it safely and make sure that the guys that are holding on.
I just want shares.
Thank you. Any other questions? If, uh, if you're amenable, we'll move forward with getting the ordinance, uh, the first reading.
And you're, uh, looks like you're, you're planning on that, uh, for the March twenty eighth meeting.
That is correct, first reading, yeah.
All right, well, that sure sounds good to me, I've got everybody else.
I think it's a good idea. So you have time to tweak it?
I believe so, thank you.
Yeah.
So in that same, um, basic conversation about downtown, uh, you also have, uh, Bob here to talk about some ideas. I've kind of, uh, intermediate term to the, prior to getting to the, the long-term full reconstruction of Minor. So, Bob?
Thank you, oh, all right. I, uh, made a little model over the weekend, I, I think it helps kind of understand what I'm talking about in terms of proportions and things like that. Anyway, the, uh, I really wanted to be part of the follow-up on the downtown plan that we adopted and, and, uh, spent sixty-five grand on, uh, that the, the city adopted last December, and I think the money was well spent. And, uh, it's well spent if we follow up on it, at least. So, uh, I've been, uh, enthusiast of downtown here for a long time. So, uh, I was, in terms of near term, it's of course a very flexible term, and I was trying to go the cheapest route, uh, that we could to really change the streetscape and make it more pedestrian-friendly. And I'm a big, uh, fan of pavers that we have now, uh, in, uh, hardscape. But the fact is that when we get into that, uh, the, the costs are enormous, and the long-term plan of making the the curbless street or whatever, like a, a plaza sort of experience downtown here, we're looking at a lot of millions of dollars, I'm sure. Probably more next week than it would be this week. So, anyway, so, uh, after probably ten iterations, I finally, I came up with the concept of a boardwalk. Very wide, generous boardwalk on each side of the street. And, uh, in the packet, there was, uh, that little three-page thing with the drawing, I'm assuming, did you guys get that?
Yeah, in fact, there's extra copies up there.
The, uh, this proposal, uh, I tried to check every box, and I think I was able to do that. Now, the near-term, uh, concept that the, the downtown study had, and a number of the midterm ones as well. But of course, further out, you get the more, uh, expense is involved and so on. But anyway, uh, the boardwalk was absolutely the, uh, most economical way to go, one that does not get involved with the infrastructure that I think serves the pedestrians. Right now, the configuration of the street is really a challenge, I think, as Jonathan and, uh, Jared and so on can, uh, other restaurateurs can attest to, is a real challenge to use the hybrid street where you're opening and closing maybe for morning, afternoon, morning maintenance and watering plants, and then closing in the afternoon, but especially the seasonal stuff. Where the restaurants have to take all their furniture and fixtures and equipment in, stash it somewhere during the winter. This, this plan really, I think, makes a very simple, uh, a plan or, uh, effort each season to change whatever you want to do. I don't think the plan or, or concept gets in the way of any programming that we might have, and nothing that I've heard in long-term community, uh, uh, what, dining area, okay, the C O D A, put that one. Anyway, so, so this is a follow-up on that. Uh, and of course, there was huge business and public input in this, but I, I did take it a little further and talked to, uh, in more specifics to some of the, uh, business people downtown primarily, and, uh, and, uh, the, uh, well, I just had the input here. And so basically what I'm proposing, uh, if you look at the, uh, little drawing on the graph paper in the back here. And this covers up existing pavers and curb and gutter. It does not impede the flow of the water such as it is. I'm sure John will appreciate that around the, the, uh, bump outs and so on. But, uh, it does cover up, uh, multitude of dripping hazards. Possibly some, uh, curbs that we can avoid spending the money on, uh, right away for maintenance. The fact is, uh, this boardwalk I did. The fact is, uh this boardwalk I did here covers up a ton of the burden. Uh both for the businesses and the uh and the city. And uh whether that's good or bad philosophically, that's a whole other discussion. So looking at boardwalk, uh very down home sort of thing. Admittedly, uh it's more subject to damage and wear and so on. But the replacement of the planks of the deck would be uh really very cheap and quick. And also, as far as the building goes, can be phased, a start at one end, just work your way east. It does not take blocks at a time out of commission, so it'd be fairly fast. So we have fifty two feet between uh the storefronts. And the, oh, one other thing about the boardwalk. And like, my thinking is to take the boardwalk to the ends of the buildings on each block. Does not impinge on the sidewalk or the avenues, uh the sidewalks on the avenues in any way. Uh it just goes to the end of the building, and so it's only the storefronts that have the boardwalk in the front. And of course, with ramps and all that sort of thing. It's a low level boardwalk, it will be essentially resting on the paved sidewalks. And uh and again, let the water flow underneath. And the uh it would be one unified structure with horizontal uh framing underneath. Literally, very simple framing and uh and then with the boards being vertical or ninety degrees to the buildings for the street. And this concept, in addition to two uh very generous boardwalks, it still leaves a twenty foot uh street. Which uh Nate uh says is very adequate, uh very adequate. For uh the one through lane that we use now and one one parking lane. And without bump outs, the bump outs would be covered. Uh we could probably get twelve uh parking spaces, at least eleven certainly per block. So we don't really lose the full half of the park in downtown. We we actually gain about a half dozen back on one side, just because of the simple straight through configuration. The uh. One thing that the liquor holders seem to like, uh liquor license holders. Is having their licensed uh premise next to their building, not having to carry beverages across the uh public sidewalk. And uh so with sixteen feet, we can still maintain the ten foot encroachment. Uh although I understand it was twelve, I thought it was ten. Uh but they wouldn't have to deal with the gutter. Uh now and uh, you know, serving food, the tables that are uneven and that sort of thing. So it really, uh I think simplifies uh the operation and service. And certainly makes it closer to the and more efficient for the restaurant operator. And uh it forces the uh passing pedestrians outboard toward the traffic lane. And so that's where many, well, many planters come in because they also serve, they're quite large. Uh and heavy, and they would serve as security barriers uh for the the seated patrons as well as the pedestrian traffic. On straight retail uh establishments, you would have the full sixteen foot walk, wide walk that would be open. And in those areas, uh is where I would propose putting much larger planters with small species of trees. You know, flowering, flowering crops or whatever. Uh that, and we need large planters for two reasons. Number one, to insulate the roots. Uh growing trees and planters in this climate is a challenge. And uh from talking to some arborists and so on, they're thinking that six foot diameter, uh stock tanks is what I'm talking about here. Uh they, with some insulation on the insides, foam, would probably protect the roots. And uh would have to be drained and so on, uh but still, I think we could uh try this. And we could try it with a number of different northern species of small trees. So anyway, uh another function, another function that these large planters would have is to divert the passing pedestrian traffic. In toward the display windows for retailers and the and the front doors. So they wouldn't be out toward the traffic in front of those wider areas. The traffic would have to be forced in toward the buildings. And so I think we answered that, just uh as it worked out. All of the, I'm thinking of stock tanks, uh because they're a ton cheaper than the uh. Earthenware that you buy for most, uh let's say, long term streetscapes. And uh all of these, even the large ones, the six foot diameter ones. Uh run anywhere between two and three hundred, actually, none of them reach three hundred dollars. So in terms of expense here, it it's super cheap, which it also goes for the the wood deck as well. So the uh. The two foot high planters, which is pretty standard, also uh could be used for seating. The the city would be providing seating with all of these planters at the same time they're doing everything else with them. And so uh one thing, uh what I call a mini plaza would be where the wider walks are in terms of the. Uh regular retail establishments. And interestingly, looking at the frontage for the retail liquor establishments, uh it comes to about forty eight percent of downtown. The fifty two percent being non liquor license. So it's essentially half and half. The large tree, uh planters, the six foot ones, or the oblong ones, that can be either six or eight feet. Uh and uh where the sidewalks are narrower, we couldn't put the six foot ones in there, of course. As uh the traffic has to get by the liquor license area. So it seems to me that a different species of tree group throughout the downtown in these different bunches would be kind of an interesting experience. The uh back to the boardwalk itself again. It would provide a place to anchor all of the shelters and tents, uh tables, umbrellas. Uh without the wind taking it away. And we could get rid of all the five gallon buckets full of uh water, the cinder blocks, the sandbags, all that kind of stuff. It would it would really clean up the serving areas and and the whole experience. It would be a lot better use of uh time, it would just simply look better and be secure. And as we know, no matter how much weight you put on some of these things, the wind up here could still take care of it. So I I would be hopeful the deck would stay put. So anyway, uh the planters, the oblong planters. Let's go to the next page here on the backside. Really provide a lot of things besides a security barrier. And by the way, all of these planters full of rubble or topsoil and so on, they weigh between three thousand and four thousand pounds. And so they'll be fairly secure and they can certainly be secured to the deck uh to make them uh even uh more robust. And uh also, they can all set on uh on boards that would allow a forklift to get under and move them fairly easily. So it would, uh the oblong planters or even the ones with the trees in would provide uh space to put in a light pole with uh. The uh solar lighting that we have. Let's start, just pass it around. And this is similar to the, it's the same company that we have, the one outside, there are several choices of solar lights.
Pass it around?
Yeah, sure.
There's a a piece underneath the two, if you wanna grab that.
Oh, yeah, it's a little flittery, yeah. And the uh glue on the trees is a little wet, so the tree.
I wasn't sure if you had a chance to look at it.
No, 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 you can walk around the room.
Oh, well, I just.
No, you can pass it, I I'm not worried about it as far as that goes. It might be easier just to. Anyway, uh so the the modern solar lights now, unlike the ones that we bought out here during Marilyn Berry's administration, probably twenty years ago. And that light out here is still working, it's the same company. And uh so they're they're commercial grade. And each light would cost between two and three hundred dollars. And uh how many other other lights would be, uh you know, a lower level lighting, but it would be right at the walkways. And I think it would just add a really nice charming uh uh small town feel to it, I believe. And uh also, uh very cheaply, you, the solar lighting now, you can get the more uh warmer colors of the bulbs. And uh also intensity. And generally speaking, uh from everything I've been reading with this company, that one day of charging on the batteries will provide about two nights worth of uh lighting now. So the things are getting a lot more efficient. Also, uh the three inch posts, which are pretty standard, that would provide the city uh with some elevated places to hang plants. That are front and center, uh and uh we wouldn't have to deal with Excel on that. And uh also a a place for traffic signage, all on the same pole. And so I think it would clean up the streetscape a lot. Uh in all, in addition, uh as far as seating goes, you can put the, you know, plants across the bottom deck. Uh provide some pretty nice seating on all of these units. So uh another alternate there would be on the vertical posts on the lower left there. Take a look and you can see one idea of just two poles with a cross member in the top to hang plants on either side or in the middle. But also, it would provide a very robust framework for banners in the off season. And so. The planters could also uh be placed our summer planters within the round ends of the uh of the stock tanks here. So again, even the lower uh ground level plant would be raised from where they are now sitting on the sidewalk. Up to uh a couple feet and out toward the front where the maintenance from the city. Uh picking up uh trash, the the trash can could also be uh installed inside the round end of these uh. Uh units, these stock tanks. And uh so we could, they're very, very flexible. And uh but it brings all the maintenance, the trash collection, the wiring and the plants and everything, front and center. Out to the uh the city crew when they go through in the morning. And uh. The, now the stock tanks themselves, I've talked to a number of companies, there's a lot of competition in that business, more than I would have ever had. And really good prices and robust stock tanks. It's a company out of Hastings, Nebraska. Uh and uh they roll a steel pipe into the top rim of their stock tank. So uh they're not subject to crushing and denting, which I'm sure they would be subject to down there. Uh but they do advertise them as completely crush proof. They say if you if you dent the top rim of this thing, you're gonna fold up inside as well. And so uh these are very robust. And again, uh cost roughly what the the solar lighting was, between uh two and three hundred dollars. The uh and stock tanks are certainly uh strictly accurate here. Look at the old pictures and see how many horses we must have watered in the past, so on. See. Okay, the other, well, I don't think you need to see pictures of stock tanks, I think I'll know what they look like. And uh the big round tank, the six footer. Is two hundred and seventy six dollars, that's expensive. So anyway, frankly, this is, this whole plan is on the cheap. And even at that, for the three blocks, it still comes to about a quarter million dollars. But uh it's an investment, I and I think would pay really, really quickly. Uh one thing it does is add about ten thousand, I'm not sure, about ten thousand feet of pedestrian area. Uh so in terms of the weight, for example, of Bojoes or Tommyknockers. And that's one thing, it's mentioned how crowded the sidewalks are uh all year long on weekends and so on, especially in the summer. That this plan really should relieve it because you have enormous amounts of additional space. And uh the total space downtown is about thirteen thousand five hundred right now for pedestrians. And uh, you know, when when this is finished, it should be around twenty four thousand feet. And it's primarily at the expense of parking on one side of the street and a narrower traffic lane, of course, is still adequate. So that's, it's a concept, uh I tried to check the boxes, answer the business uh uh concerns. With various restaurants and so on, maintain their liquor license areas, have level trip free decking. Uh which would be very uh ADA friendly. And since it's a very low level deck, any of the ramps could be recessed into the deck. And uh and you know, to get down to street level and uh at the ends of the blocks or crossing midway, we could have two or three cross street. Uh ramps in the middle of each block. And uh one uh concern is that uh Nick uh brought up of the kind mind that and that we had considered. Is that uh the deck, you gain three and a half or four inches. And on the north side, that's great because almost everybody has a step up into the building. On the south side, some some have step ups, Tommyknockers is one where they have a ramp and so on. But many of them, like the Buffalo, I know, uh are uh pretty much leveled. And with uh three and a half or four inch uh at the most ramp. You could either recess the the ramp into the uh sidewalk, the boardwalk itself. Or uh intrude the ramp into the setback in the doorways. And you know, I would say whatever standard design would come up with would be simple. And uh and not really uh any ADA uh challenge as far as that goes. So tried to answer pretty much everything I could run across with talking to the businesses with what they run up here. And uh so anyway, that's my follow up to the plan. And uh I don't, Jared did bring up about the idea maybe of uh. A pilot project in part of a block to see how it goes. Uh and that has a certain appeal in terms of uh. Let me put it this way, I've never had a pilot project I didn't learn something from. But all in all, COVID has taught us a lot, the city and the business people, the last three years, two years. And uh and I think frankly, that we could be pretty comfortable going with something pretty major, a major change like this. And again, looking at a temporary thing, ultimately, we may wanna go with the pavers all the way across the street. With the, you know, the boulders that they talked about. And there are only two other boardwalks in Colorado. Uh one uh Grand Lake that John uh Bordoni mentioned to me, and then Breckridge has one near the river. And uh a boardwalk is, quite frankly, I think in itself a marketable item uh in Colorado. And certainly, they used many more on the East Coast where they're, and formerly boardwalks, there are a lot of public boardwalks, but they're almost all on the East Coast and with a handful on the West Coast. So uh they're popular and a marketable item all themselves. So that's it, I'll quit talking.
Bob, that was a lot of work. I mean, I really appreciate all the uh, you know, uh investment of your time and running these prices down and uh. You know, uh alternative materials such as tracks and stuff.
Yeah, boy, I checked the prices this morning, uh they're going up. Lumber's still going up, but not as much. Oh, and they can get steel for this project, they'll guarantee delivery on time, any day we pick.
Oh.
This is a lot of planters, I mean, stock tanks, sorry, let's be honest, there's stock tanks, so.
Very good. Yeah, John Bordoni would be real curious, uh what do you think?
Well, I have a few concerns. We're adding extreme amount of more. Flowers and plants that we have to water. Currently, it takes us about two or three hours a day just for what we put out. So you could almost double that, you'd almost have one person or two people all day long watering flowers and plants. And that would happen to be when there's pedestrians and everybody present on that boardwalk too. Um the other concern I have is you said that the boards are going to be perpendicular to the buildings. And the framework would be parallel to the buildings.
Yeah.
So you'll have a a stoppage right there in the street where water won't run under it to the to the gutters. Because you'll have boards parallel with the street, so you're gonna have that on the street.
Well, okay, the the, it'd be about twenty four inch, you know, centers on that bottom framework, I don't know, it's cold on the deck.
But with that much weight on the outside of it, I think you're gonna have to almost put a board parallel at the end of the boards. To keep them from starting to sag with the weight of all your planters and.
Oh, yeah, uh in fact, uh on that that cross section here, I I have uh. Oh, yeah, in fact, on that that cross section here, I I have support every two feet. Out, which I think is cold anyway, even on a on a ground level deck. And. And I. The boards would run parallel to the gutter, so I think the water would. It it's the top deck that would be perpendicular to the buildings, but the stringers underneath.
Would be per- parallel to the gutter.
Yeah.
So are they gonna stop water from running under the boards to the gutter?
We know, they would have to be breaks in them, they would have to be. And they can be offset, there's no question. One thing, as far as the the planters go, there's a large number of these things. Because of the security barrier thing, and I don't, we don't need to put plants in everyone. Or or lights, yeah, so that's a good point though, yeah, that would be a lot of plants, that's for sure, so.
I disagree with the police chief about twelve foot lanes and eight foot parking. Everybody sees how minor street parking is on minor street, people are two foot from the curb, three foot from the curb. And especially in the winter when you're trying to get down through there. Snow removal, you're gonna have to stay at least a foot or two away from these boards or we're just gonna destroy this deck. With the equipment. And whether you use a flower, you use a loader, there's always gonna be material spilling off of that that we can't get next to boards.
It's gonna lift up that track, it's gonna lift it up.
It's gonna, if if somebody hits it, especially cars parking, I think they're gonna hit it and back into it. Cause right now you watch people, they run up over the curbs to get parked and back.
But John, even just pushing the um, the snow up, wouldn't it hit the what the and it would push it?
If we have.
Push the board like the last snowstorm, we saw the big pieces of of snow that came off, wet, heavy snow.
And I don't want to take anything away from your idea, Bob, I I really appreciate.
Well, no, but I, we need input, I don't have problems with that.
I I think if we're going to do something, we should do it permanently.
That's.
Okay.
I'm a hundred percent agreement on that.
And I think if we want.
And and your idea is amazing.
They could make stamped concrete look just about like anything that you can think of anymore.
Yeah, and. Yeah, I.
Be more durable.
Yeah, the stamp, we're still looking though, one thing, once we get into the real streetscape and so on downtown. None of the service lines were replaced.
No, they weren't.
When the street was done, so they're gonna be increasing maintenance on these things and.
Yes.
And digging up, and so it seems to me, whatever we do permanently downtown, we gotta put in service lines every bit.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I would. I bet we're looking at eight million bucks all the way through all three blocks at this point, and I'm not saying it can't be done.
Oh, oh, no, it's it's very expensive, trust me, I wouldn't even venture a guess right now as to what it would cost to redo that street.
Yeah, so so I'm looking at near term and. And again, that's a flexible, flexible term. And I was going basically a quantum leap on the cheap, somebody said at one meeting. And so it would, you know, it would change the look of the street a lot and the deck would not be as robust, it wouldn't deck. With, I would think a tracks under frame would be good. As a. As a concrete or favorite sidewalk.
Oh, no.
And but still in all, this is cheaper and temporary. And so I'm looking near term and how long will it be before we do the full streetscape? And I guess part of my problem is right now is that, and we're still learning, like Jonathan says. In terms of what COVID has done and changing every season and so on. And it just seems to me that. We we need to make a change in the meantime while we get our act together for the long expensive term. And. Because I don't think the street is serving us, and I was here during when we did, we did the street. And on council at the time, and it served us very well, but right now, we need to cater to pedestrians. And quite frankly. It's working right now and it could bring in, I believe, so much more money. And when we get the parking structure over here, mobility center. The number of people on these sidewalks is gonna increase dramatically, might be like doubling.
That's another one of my questions for another time, but.
Yeah.
How many more people can Idaho's planes tolerate?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I guess one last question real quick that I have is the maintenance of the deck. Is that our responsibility also, or is it going to be the?
Well, it's an interesting discussion, glad you brought that up because the city. Frankly, residents and cities all have responsibilities for the walk, maintenance. And repair and installation in front of their property, even though it's on city property. It's their responsibility. And the city and the downtown businesses have never broached that subject. And I don't think we want to necessarily right now with the city and everything going on. And so I was looking at this quite frankly as an investment by the city and not the business owners. And for one thing, you can get it done, it could be consistently, it could be quicker. And and I think the the maintenance, I I don't know, we haven't done a good job. Approaching the maintenance on the pavers. Where the curbs and gutters and so on, and now curbs and gutters, that's city expense, right?
Curbs and gutters are.
But the pavers are.
Pavers are the property owner.
Property owner, yeah, and and they've settled, we have the the valve. Stem covers or pipe, whatever, staking up in a lot of places and it's something we're gonna have to address, we should address it. Now, and quite frankly, what I was trying to, one of the advantages I was thinking here here is. Take a lot of the money that we really need to do with maintenance and also approaching all the businesses with a kind of a sticky wicket. Is to cover it with the deck. And someday when we do the big job, the permanent streetscape downtown, then it could all come out then.
Jonathan, I saw your head hand up. John.
This is a really interesting project because we just completed our downtown master plan. And what Bob has really tried to do is take the elements that we agreed upon with the community and all that review and work that we've done. And put it into a alignment that could work in kind of a short term experience. I think there are some challenges we have on Minor Street, no matter how we cut the cut the cheese here, you know, so. One of the things I wanted to comment on is that there are only a hundred and fifty eight available parking spaces for visitors to our community. When you take into account the free permits that we allow downtown. That is not a tremendous amount, I don't think that bringing more pedestrians in is necessarily gonna be our challenge right now. Because I think we're just limited in where that can work. It's not too little spaces, we still generate really good sales tax revenue from those spaces. And of course, our community members generate sales tax dollars downtown as well. I think that what we need to remember, Bob kind of mentioned this, is that we have a pilot program downtown right now. We have a preferred long term solution, but there, and I think Art spoke, our consultant, Cacavelli spoke to this as well. That there are things that we could do downtown to make the experience better for everyone. And just thinking about low hanging fruit and iterating a little bit. I'm wondering, Bob, if you have any ideas about where you think the most. Prevalent low hanging fruit is within your plan, that might be something that we could tackle with a smaller grant from C dot. Which are going to be coming available soon, hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants. And I'm kind of wondering if, you know, if this is an interim solution, if we keep the thing that's made us most accessible, which is being nimble. And adaptable and finding some some short term, you know, for instance, the lighting that you suggested. Sounds like something that might make that streetscape better, but that's kind of what my question was, is what are the low hanging fruit items that we might be able to achieve? On a kind of a short term basis here and then keep building over time or just test to see if that works?
You know, I I've thought about the city, you know, putting in, I I don't think it works particularly in Citizen Spark because it's so different. But I was wondering about maybe in front of the telephone company, they could care less what we do, I mean, we would still want to contact them, of course. But put in a section there, we could also approach the businesses and see which one or two, hopefully together. You know, next door to each other would be interested in putting, my my guess is there would be a number of businesses interested. In having this pilot project in front of their business, which case we'd have to draw straws, I guess, pull a name out of a hat. So I think there are different ways to do it, and I think a pilot project to me. Makes sense, and I know Jared brought that up and I thought about it before and then it got put on the back burner, I guess. But it really did kind of excite me, it would certainly be a cheaper way to go. You'll put in the elements that we're looking at here and and see what doesn't work, see what does work. But I can't recall, we have, I'm figuring the buildings are about two hundred and fifty feet between the walls. Along the length of the block, roughly.
Yes.
So totally, we have about fifteen hundred feet if you count both sides. Yeah, so fifteen, fifteen hundred storefronts.
Three hundred, but.
And so, quick, your calculator in your head. A quarter million dollars, I'm just trying to do a front footage cost here. Let's say we do forty feet, forty four feet or something like that. Would well just be a little bitty portion, little portion. What the full fifteen hundred feet would be, I might be really small, actually. So that might be a good way to go. And I would, I wouldn't be surprised if some liquor license holder would like to try this out. Although there is an ordinance issue about with the sidewalk now, we'd have to change the way coordinates, as I practice, I understand it.
I believe if the code was passed, then.
That would take care of that.
Yeah, the liquor license holder would just have to request a little bit of a change in there, in their outdoor layout premise, thank you. And yeah.
Okay, anyway, Jonathan, I I think that would be an interesting study, I really do.
I was wondering also, is it an option to do the lights, like, is there a way to get the lights piece done? Since that sounds like something that might be a community desire to look at that piece. I'm just wondering if there's a couple of alternatives we could explore from a staff level to provide further information or or if you would like to do that or.
The, you're talking about the solar lighting and that kind of thing or? Yeah, I mean, these are sold as individual units, so we could. Purchase anytime, any number we wanted. That goes with the stock tanks too, as far as, I don't think they'll deliver a small number. I I think the sales director there was interested because he likes to ski, he was gonna drive their truck.
I have one more suggestion I just wanted to mention, we had just purchased several and they were on council agenda last regular meeting. The new flower boxes that we purchased for Minor Street Winter Operations and they're black. They resemble ore carts, which is one of the reasons that we liked them at the time. They are not stock tanks, but they're constructed very similarly. I was wondering if this may be a way to repurpose those units, and I know the stock tanks is, I I have no problem with the stock tank idea, but. I'm just thinking about resources that we have and could we put lights in them and would that be something that might start?
Pretty narrow, okay, I think like fourteen inches maybe, something like that. I'm thinking just in terms of security and. How robust they are.
Then might be eighteen or twenty inches.
Oh, are they that that big? Yeah, will those. Existing planters that we have fit on the bottom of the the iron structures on the rollers that we have? They fit on that?
It needs to be welded on, but I think we could, and maybe potentially supported a little bit more, but they might fit.
Yeah, well, I I was, it was just a kind of another thought, uh, maybe a use for those, but anyway. Some people may not react positively to stock tanks, but I figure, hey, it's who we were. We had a lot of horses.
Okay, yeah, question.
Um, I I have a comment, actually, um. I love everything about the way this looks, I really truly do, I think some place, sometime in the future. The whole infrastructure of Minor Street is going to have to be changed and it's probably not that far into the future. I have a very, very hard time spending a quarter of a million dollars on anything temporary, as John knows. Even if it's a permanent temporary, I I do think that maybe some trees and lighting downtown would be an improvement on the the ambiance. But right now, just based on what I know of that particular substructure. It is not durable, it is not durable in in a residential area, which is where I have it, it's Boeing. It's rotting underneath, it it's just not exactly, I mean, we.
You're talking about the wooden deck?
The wood, the tracks and and the wood, yeah, yeah, it's just, I mean, I don't know, what is, when we're talking about temporary, what is temporary? Is it five years, is it ten years, is it fifteen years?
Temporary depends on the amount of money you have to spend to replace it.
Well, and I get that, Bob.
Totally flexible term, really is.
But it's still temporary and it's still a quarter of a million dollars and we still have this conversation from thirty years ago till now that we're spending money. And we're not doing it to the, in in the way that's totally beneficial to the residents, this is really gonna be for the tourists only and.
It increases sales tax.
I I understand that, but but it but but does it increase in the temporary timeframe it to a quarter of a million dollars or more?
Absolutely.
I I don't know that you can absolutely prove that.
I bet you we can run numbers and do pretty good.
I'm sure we can make up any numbers we want.
Hey, Bob, you know, as far as having a trial. You had mentioned like forty feet.
Well, I I was thinking two twenty two foot stores, you know, whatever.
Right, so this is under eight grand. And I'm not, I'm saying we might even find a sponsor for that, we may find a business that would like to try that.
Yeah, well, I think.
And obviously, you know, if it if it helps out, I'm sure they'll share it with us. If it doesn't, I'm sure they'll share that with us.
And well, yeah, it's up, really up to the city, I I mean, to me, a pilot project makes sense. And without breaking a bank at all and. And we learn a lot.
And I I don't have any idea who that business or businesses may be, but I'm just saying, it seems to me that it's a low enough price point. We might have a willing party or parties willing to go forty feet and check it out because, you know. Kate's point about durability and some very valid concerns that John has. You know, the these could be, these can be tested, you know, and maybe six, maybe sixteen feet out. Isn't ideal, but fourteen is, you know, I mean, we can try try this in a in a test subject.
Yeah, yeah, and yeah, the fourteen, I believe I ran that by, but in the areas where the liquor licenses. The the license holders really don't want any more narrow area.
Right, right, no, I I follow you, but I'm I'm just thinking, you know, as far as.
Good point.
As as city money goes, it it might even be taken out of our hands if we have willing participants that would like to try that.
Right.
But when 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 putting that in a couple of spots kind of. Fended the flow of the trend of the of the pedestrians.
What I'm sorry.
It's gonna hinder the flow of the pedestrians, they're gonna have how many feet of sidewalk in one area? And then for forty four feet, it's gonna go wider and then beyond that, it's gonna go narrow again?
Yeah, sure.
Why, why?
Why, well, because the the licensed areas, you can't. The the license, liquor license holders don't want the traffic, the pedestrian traffic going through their areas. Where their liquor license, where like they're out on the street now, they have to serve liquor through this pedestrian way, which is not licensed. And it's more of a legal issue than anything else, hasn't been a practical issue, but. But the fact is that these wider areas. Will provide all kinds of room for your other programming, everything from. You go with bicycle ride racks in between these big planters to.
Well, I know. If you do the whole project, but if you're piecing all the projects, I think.
Yeah.
I I I don't see any advantage to that, that all, because you've got a flow on a Saturday of three people walking in the sidewalk. Then you get to this other spot and now six people should walk, they get beyond that and then they have to go back on the street.
Seems to me where you have these large areas, relief areas, and also where crowds can gather while they're waiting for their pizza or whatever. Would make sense, especially areas in front of the retail windows. Right now, the sidewalks are essentially blocked, they're blocked through.
So to me, that doesn't make any sense. So to me, that doesn't make any sense. Also, I I I know, I know. We're so restricted in so many areas to the the geographical size of our little town. I think we either have to have the streets blocked off or not blocked off. I don't believe. Intermixing the traffic of one lane and one parking lane with pedestrians is conducive to to the. To the the beauty that I'm thinking of when you look at a at a mall. And I think if you go look at some of these other places, it better describe what I'm talking about, and I'm not good at describing it, but. I I I we're trying to mix apples and oranges, and I know we don't have a lot of parking, so I don't have the answer, but my answer is. It's either should be one way or the other, mixing cars and pedestrians to me is not.
Were you saying close the street totally or?
Either happen for pedestrians or don't have it.
Yeah.
That's simple. So I can't, I can't give you the answer to that one, but. It doesn't make sense to me to have a one lane of dry traffic, one lane of parking and then. And then mix all the additional pedestrians.
Which is what we have now essentially.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was telling you when I saw these others, what we have now doesn't compare to what they have and that's. I'm going with the other concept, not not this concept.
And Art, I I agree with you about a red, I spend time down there and I I I love it just being pedestrian only.
I don't know how they got around it because it was it was. A very trafficked area, but it seems to be working for them somehow.
It was a tough area.
So if you're worried about protections, why don't you put rope over, put irrigation system in for John's guys, hook up on the end of the block.
And. John, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
But real fine, if you were want to improve for protections. Down there, you can run that irrigation line for John's guys to play.
Oh, I, oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, that could happen. By the way, one other concern John had, he didn't mention was ice buildup. That happens in the curves now, and in fact, you have to break an ice. That one part of the thinking here was running some ice melt cables down along the south side in the gutter. And if we need it, you know, to prevent the buildup, we could go ahead and fire them up, you know, from a little. On the generator or something or maybe a permanent.
Let's do that anyway.
Yeah.
The only thing about that that I thought of too is if you run something right next to the curve. You're only going to have a short distance that's melt melting next to that heat.
It's gotta go in.
Then you're going to have this area that just keeps building up ice.
Well. It's going to take multiple cables, I agree with you, yeah, but I I think. But anyway, yeah, we're kind of getting back on some of the details here, but. Anyway, yeah, there's some really neat concepts out there and frankly, boardwalks do work. They're not as robust as cement, there's no way, but I gotta tell you, there is a. A certain charm about them that's practical. And you may have to replace boards now and then, but it's real cheap to do that, that's for sure. Use stainless fasteners throughout. And that screws that, replace the tanks. And.
Wait. So is Evergreen, that one section though, they have oil blocks?
Some of them do and some of them don't.
Yeah, but.
It's not one level, it's multiple levels.
Yeah, yeah, like in front of Little Bear or things like that.
Yeah, and the.
Anyway, I I guess. What I think would be interesting is to, you know, pursue a pilot project. I think ISMA. Many of the business people are familiar with this, now if they're interested, I mean, we may have to have a drawing, I think there'll be multiple people interested in doing this. But I think it's really a good idea not to have one twenty-foot. Twenty-two foot wide store by itself, it seems to me we need to. Maybe at least do two together, unlimited to two, but. Or maybe one bigger restaurant, you know, I'm not sure, but they have to draw lots and maybe. Maybe two adjacent businesses go together for a drawing or something like that. Because I don't think we, we certainly don't need more than one pilot project protruding out into the street.
Right.
Sixteen feet, and so I think. I I think it's normal, or like I was thinking just in front of the phone company. I don't think they could care one way or or another and. You know, just see how how that's received, I don't know, maybe an interesting seating area and so on, adjacent to the park.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we have a couple volunteers, you know, slash sponsors.
Yeah. So that would, you were talking about eight thousand dollars roughly or?
Yeah, for that gets you about forty feet.
Okay.
So, you know, I just think it's. For some businesses that it's a lot, but but for others, it's a nominal amount. I I just think. It's at a pricing point where we may actually have a willing sponsor slash participant.
Well, ISMA probably would. Don't be the one to, well, I think the city could approach the. The business group, you know, see what they think. And if it if it works and, you know, maybe go with it later. But we're not, and I'm, I think a pilot project makes a lot of sense, frankly.
Yeah.
A modest pilot project. And so. I don't know, that's what I have.
So I really appreciate all that time and, you know, Bob, with a pilot project, we'll probably find out all kinds of different things.
Yeah, I think so too. Anyway. Okay, I'm gonna take this, well, now leave it here right now, it's not really finished, but it's finished enough. And the trees didn't fall over, that glue was really wet when we came in there. Anyway, so. We'll just leave this here for a while, people take with that and we'll go from there.
All right, sounds real good. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Andy.
Mayor, one clarification on what we said earlier, I just want to make sure everybody knows this. The plan right now is to have downtown marketplace as it was last year with the street closed. We could change that, but I mean, that is the expressed desire of the recovery task force and the businesses as far as we've been able to gauge it. So the plan right now is mid to late May to to close down Minor Street. It'll be pedestrian only through the summer and probably well in the fall. Because what we have heard from businesses, they very much, getting back to the question of. Serving alcohol outdoors, they very much want to continue. What we did last year, certainly all want to make it better, but they don't want to lose what the traction we had last year, so. So. Moving forward with the ordinance to allow the outdoor areas for serving is is important to maintain what we did last year. It does give us a little more flexibility on the special events, as Jared mentioned. But right now, let's go in other direction, it is the plan to go ahead and shut down. Minor Street to pedestrian only this summer, that doesn't mean we can couldn't evolve into something else down the road, but that is the plan now.
So we ought to get Bob's stock takes in here, so we put put ice and cake to burn.
Well, I think that gets back. Serious, dude, I think that gets back to what John was saying. Are there certain elements of this plan or other ideas that we can implement? Low hanging fruit this year, and I think that makes a lot of sense. One other thing I might mention, Bob did mention lighting. But Tom will tell you, we haven't, we're on borrowed time with our existing decorative lights downtown. It's very, they're Excel, owned by Excel and maintained by Excel, but as you all have observed, some. Have not been repaired in a in a long time and that's partly because of the parts. Just that they're they're old and I really think we need to look at what we want to do as far as lighting in a comprehensive way downtown. And I think at the very least, we probably need to be replacing. The existing lights we have, I think having other decorative lights is a great idea, but I know that's going to be an expensive task. It has to happen probably sooner rather than later.
Art, okay, do we pay for the lights that belong to Excel?
Yes.
We we own the lights, but Excel maintains them.
I I misspoke.
So if a light, if a light gets ran over or knocked down, we pay to replace that light.
But they have.
And they put it back.
Yeah, I remember that.
What? They maintain them, correct, yeah.
More or less now. Yeah, but they're old enough now, the parts aren't yet.
Yes.
Really?
They don't. Well, actually, the streetlights on Colorado Boulevard are no longer offered by XL. The ones that were just put in.
Really?
Four years ago.
Great, wow. How much does it cost to replace one of these lamps, would you?
Well, I have a contract to have three streetlights put in in the back parking lot down. Behind Tommyknockers and Gold Goings. It's eighteen thousand dollars for three streetlights.
Six thousand each.
Yeah.
Now, those are, those are not decorative, those will be tall, they'll be similar to what's on Colorado Boulevard. For the backside of a parking lot there, one of those decorative lights were taken out with the westbound, it appears old away project.
Hey, guys, what what about, I know this, just tell me this sounds really cheap, it's horrible, but Bob's idea of the. The stock tanks, which I think can look kind of cool, they can have little flowers around them that are real, but what about something that's a baker tree? That can be utilized elsewhere with. Christmas lights, so you're not watering the bejebers out of these huge trees, the center part is a. Tree that doesn't need to be watered essentially, and the outside of the stock could be actual live plants and have that as a temporary. You know, beautification of downtown, all of these things can be reused somehow in the future. So we can give the trees away, the lights can be reused because it's just Christmas lights. That they have industrial style and then the plants and the stock tanks, which is something that we want to accommodate anyway. Is that a look? I mean, can anybody visualize that as being something that might look good?
Yeah, some elements, yeah, well, yeah, you can face things different ways, you know, by. A section, a whole section or a pilot pilot project where you have some of all these elements or. Just one or two of the elements.
Yeah, I mean.
In a bigger area.
I I'm telling you, I love the way it looks, I truly do. I mean, I actually kind of think that maybe closing it in the summer forever. Is ultimately the best goal, especially when the parking garage is done, I mean, then we have so much room to play.
Yeah.
But it it does look beautiful, I mean, that that's not my concern, it's just money. And temporary, it's like finishing your floor and then finishing it again in three years, it doesn't make sense to me.
Oh, but everything's temporary.
We all are, I understand.
Yeah, anyway, well, I I'm I'm really glad for all the interest in this because we've had so many studies in the past that. Have gone to waste.
I agree.
You saw the list of studies that Chaney put in here and that Jim Lee did, and it's quite a long list, so would be. Great to follow up on that sixty-five grand. So, yay, so should I, well, with ISMA, I'm not on that board. I attend some of the meetings, but I can broach the subject of maybe a pilot project and see who might be interested.
I I think that would be great, like, and again, you know, we might even have a sponsor or or three.
Yeah, well, might, might, and yeah, hard, hard to say, everybody's a little sensitive right now with the.
Right.
And so, anyway, okay, well, good enough then, all right, well, there's, yeah, that's good, well, look at some elements and. Maybe a pilot project, but the I like the idea of this stock tank, you're so honest. It's turned down. And so, anyway, okay. You guys have other stuff to. Have you got to talk about?
Yeah, we're going to talk about the parking management update. Jonathan, one of our favorite subjects, of course, the parking management.
It is always a great subject. Mayor and council, we met with Interstate Parking on March fifteenth to discuss the parking management program. We talked about making a couple of small changes during that meeting that I wanted to detail here and then a couple of larger changes. The small ones are just really trying to build outreach and support from Interstate for the community. They're going to start holding quarterly business owner meetings where the business owners can bring them ideas and just talk and have that kind of feedback loop in an official way. That'll be coming up pretty soon once we get the first one scheduled. They also are going to work with the city to develop a new parking map that's going to show free and paid parking resources in town. As well as restricted parking areas, I think that's going to really help our efforts to make sure people know where to park, especially once we get V Camp going. I wanted to give you guys a little update about how parking generally works downtown because it can be very complicated. Just to understand, so I tried to put this section into my staff report in a way that makes it pretty simple. Parking is currently managed between the hours of ten AM and six PM, seven days a week. Interstate has parking ambassadors that manage our parking our parking facilities. All city residents, county residents and employees do get free parking in the downtown area. They are limited in some ways and I included a chart in my staff report that kind of shows it. County residents are only limited in the main city lots between Seventeenth and Fifteenth, south of Idaho. To three hours, but the rest of the parking lots, they can park unlimited, city residents can park anywhere they'd like. Employees are limited in the main lots to the south ball and the lower west slot, which is. Behind Tommyknockers to the south of Tommyknockers there, and then they're able to park in the other parking lots at unlimited. And then residents or visitors that have handicap placards or plates are able to park unlimited without registration. We currently do not have free parking on Minor Street or Fifteenth to Seventeenth avenues, south of Center Alley to I seventy essentially. Those are limited short-term parking and paid parking for residents of the city and visitors to the city. Again, anyone with a handicap placard or plate is free to park in those areas as well, for free without registration. The last part of our program is the residential only parking zone, that's managed through Interstate as well. It's limited to residents of the city and their guests and Interstate responds to complaints in those areas. When they're, when they find out about them, they do do. Regular patrols of the area, but it's primarily complaint-based. The Idaho Springs Police Department also does some of that work as well. But primarily Interstate is the one that is enforcing parking restrictions in the city along those lines, unless it's a hazard or a safety problem. Some of the bigger updates I wanted to talk to council about potentially, the first is the pricing of the parking program. When we first started the parking program, we weren't a hundred percent sure what the pricing needed to be set at, so what we did is just set it low. So that we could explore how it worked and kind of like Bob was talking about, we created a pilot program to figure out what worked and what didn't. Initially. That program ran for a while, there were some changes in that first summer, if you remember, as we responded to the community. And then in twenty twenty, the parking program shut down for a while for just for COVID nineteen. Because we're trying to make sure that the businesses had as much support as possible. We found that Idaho Springs was where everybody wanted to go pretty quickly, and so we instituted parking again in May. And the structure was first half hour free, second half hour or second hour cost. So basically, the second half hour costs a dollar fifty, the second, the second hour costs a dollar fifty and the third hour costs a dollar fifty. We've been working with that structure for some time, after three hours, currently the parking rate goes to five dollars. That's to create an economic incentive to create turnover. We know that our average stay now is between two and three hours typically, so. Usually that that increment is being felt by people who might be bicycling up one oh three or something like that. Our visitation patterns have been shifting pretty frequently throughout the COVID pandemic and we're noticing that our shoulder seasons are getting smaller and smaller. We're also seeing that our high seasons, our tourism high seasons, we're getting more and more visits to town to, you know, we've already talked about that this evening. One of the things we'd like to do is is think about how pricing should be structured in our downtown area. To just make sure that we've got the right fees so that people are coming and visiting our town and enjoying themselves and that we're still getting that turnover. We've been looking at a couple of different structures for parking, I built a couple of models to look at how revenue could look. In each of the different alternatives that we have proposed. The first one is simply just going with three hours for two dollars an hour. So our average stay would be between five and six dollars, the fourth hour and beyond would remain five dollars. Some of the benefits of a model like that are it's very simple and it's very similar to what we currently do. We charge currently a dollar fifty an hour, so this is a slight increase there, but our average ticket length. We should see pretty similar average ticket length, I would imagine with this model. Interstate has also recommended that we might go with alternative two in your staff report. Under this alternative, the first half hour would be free, the first hour would be two dollars, the second hour would be two fifty and the third hour would be five dollars. This structure would work just as well, I think, the problem is it's a little bit more complicated and difficult to understand because of the escalation and how that works. The final model that we had discussed is just simply saying the first three hours of your visit is free or is five dollars. That runs about a buck sixty-six an hour, which is a sixteen cent increase from where we are currently. Fourth hour and beyond is five dollars, that's a very simple model. The problem is, is that there isn't really a short-term option that you could have in there because you're buying three hours no matter what. Previously, we used to let everyone park for, well, even right now, we let everybody park for a half hour for free downtown. And we wanted to do that because we wanted to encourage short trips into the downtown, especially by. And we wanted to do that because we wanted to encourage short trips into the downtown, especially by community members. Who are running in for a pizza or whatever coffee that they need. Um, the intention of that program is very good, but it hasn't worked as well as we'd like. We are giving more citations than we should because of that free half hour, because people don't understand how they need to register their vehicles to come downtown. It's not really hitting city residents or county residents necessarily, but it is affecting visitors to our town. And I think that. While, you know, we want to make sure that they're following the rules and give citations when they're not. We also don't want to give citations if we don't have to, if they're, if they're just trying to follow the rules and they're maybe not quite understanding. So one of the things that I'm recommending in the staff report is that we stop the free half hour. What I would like to do is institute a number of short-term parking spaces. I've been working with, uh, Planner Chipman and we have identified at least twelve spaces that we could add. Uh, north of Minor Street before Center Alley on each of the avenues that we could have, where we could do the short-term fifteen-minute parking. We could also add more parking spaces and that could be, um, a benefit to all of our community businesses downtown. It might make it easier to run into the library. Or to grab a coffee or a burrito or whatever it would need to be. I have recommended fifteen minutes in this staff report because we have fifteen-minute signs already. Um, we could explore whether there's an option for fifteen and thirty-minute signs, but I think for most really quick trips, fifteen minutes should cover the need there. Um, the last two things I have in my staff report are the violation fee for parking. Last year, we worked with Interstate to balance the city violation fee for parking and the Interstate violation fee. Interstate was charging thirty-two and we were charging twenty. We balanced that at twenty-five. Um, we had a kind of an unforeseen consequence there because. The total cost for parking exceeds twenty-five dollars, so it's about thirty dollars right now. If you park all day long. And so a lot of people were just taking the ticket because it was cheaper than paying for the whole day. So what we would like to do is make sure that the parking fee is set appropriately. We've done some research and I think that fifty dollars is probably the right level for that parking violation. Um, we do have a process by which anyone can argue a ticket and that goes all the way to Idaho Springs Municipal Court. So we have a pretty good and well-established way for if there is a, a problem with the ticket, somebody can come and talk about it. They can do that virtually, so they don't have to be here if they're a visitor. So all you have to do is, at the most, would be login to Zoom. But usually that can be handled with our prosecutor as well. So I'm recommending that we change that fee to fifty dollars. That is split now between Interstate and the city as well. Um, signage. We are working right now to overhaul the signage in the parking area. We've had some conversations related to V-Camp about what signage needs to be done. And placed in the residential zones. We've also been hearing that our signage in the commercial zone could be simplified and made more obvious. We have been working with the Interstate team. She just sent me new drafts today, which I sent to staff. Which are, has some color changes and language changes that I think are really going to make our, our parking signs much better. I am not quite ready to share those with you, but I will before, um, once we have something a little bit more final. We are working on overhauling the graphics, making sure that the QR code that is used for payment is very clear and that everything is just simple and easy to see. And then we, we are working on the standardizing where the signs go as well. So. What we would really like to do is make sure that we have signs at the beginning and end of each block. And in some areas where it's a little bit more complicated, maybe an in-block sign. We want to try to strike the balance between having, you know, seven hundred and eighty-four signs downtown and having really good. Um, information for visitors to our community and residents alike. The final thing here that I have for you is, is an idea that we have to put the parking revenue into an enterprise fund. Currently, we track the revenue from the parking facilities and the budget in line item twenty-one zero zero thirty seventy. This is dedicated to downtown improvements and has been since the parking facility opened. What we would like to do is move that fund into an enterprise fund. And an enterprise fund is a special fund that. Um, is created as a result of the taxpayer bill of rights in Colorado. And what it does is it lets you run that fund like a business. So. Basically, you just, you know, you have, you have profits and, and losses. It runs basically like our water or wastewater funds. And so you run it like a business and that's kind of what we're thinking might be most appropriate for this revenue long term. That'll help us better support the upcoming mobility hub if and when it is built with that, that revenue source. So I know that's kind of a lot there. I wanted to kind of run you through my staff report. If you have any questions for me or for staff, um, I'm happy to answer them. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. I missed what you said.
I like alternate one myself.
I agree with John. I, I, I think one is, uh, probably the best, uh. Residents have a free parking, uh, county residents have free parking for three hours. Really, the question is, is two dollars an hour, uh, too much for the visitors? And I, I have found elsewhere, you know, where I go in Colorado, I. I see two hours and two dollars an hour, and I believe that's what Interstate told us was about the going rate. So I, I agree with John about, about number one.
Councilman Collier, did you have a, a question?
Yeah, I, by the way, I like, I like alternative, uh, one, alternative one as well. I think it's great. I think it's awesome that you're upping. The price for the fine because that makes kind of sense. Otherwise, it's a really great deal.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm just curious how you're going to enforce the fifteen-minute parking spots, which by the way, I think are a great idea, idea. Just not sure how that's going to look.
So, one of the things about fifteen minutes is it's easy to manage for a ambassador. It is illegal now to chalk car tires, um, like you know, you used to in small towns. Um, that has, I, I think it's just problematic in a lot of ways. So we have gotten away from that. Our ambassadors have the ability to, they can take a picture of a car and not touch it. So that's one way they could manage it and they could do it as their rounds go. So fifteen minutes is a good time for them to kind of start walking through downtown. If they're walking up and down Minor Street. They can kind of note the positions of those cars on the avenue, and then as they walk back, they can see if they moved and, and just kind of keep track of it that way. Um, I think what we'll do is those spots will probably be managed fairly. Um, not, I don't want to say loosely, but they'll be managed to make sure that people are just complying with the rules and nobody's sitting there for. A really long time. If we have a business owner that may need to move a couple boxes into their shop or something like that, we're going to probably err on the side of caution there.
Of course, that sounds good. Um, I did, I, I wanted to mention this earlier because I think it's something that can go back to the Coda idea. Um, if we have camera, cameras strategically placed in downtown, if there ever was a question about. Fifteen-minute parking or, or somebody walking around doing things that are bad weather, having a cocktail. I mean, if business owners were, you know, into it, the city could look into investing that to kind of maintain our own security downtown. So these two things could be kind of together for those guys.
Yeah, the, the Coda could be a really good first step for a lot of things to kind of coordinate the activities of everything happening downtown. There are a couple of different ways that we could build some, and, and, uh, Bob, I've talked to you this, about this a little bit. Downtowns are most successful when they have a manager that kind of works and just controls everything that's happening from a programming perspective. To security, to everything else. We are managing that currently, uh, through my position and also through the ISMA. And that's kind of how we're doing that work. But I think that as we move forward as a community, it could make sense to start exploring ways that we can make our downtown more resilient and sustainable. That might mean moving through the Main Street community a little further than we already have. That's a program that the Department of Local Affairs runs in Colorado that just promotes local businesses in. Colorado and, and historic main streets like we have. Um, another option at some point in the future might be a downtown development authority. That's a bigger conversation for the entire community and I don't want to promote that necessarily, but. Um, I think that there is some room to, to work on some of these ideas to build a really good experience for. Tourists in our community and also for residents that come downtown to be able to community or to access the community resources downtown, like the library or the. Senior Center or any of that kind of stuff that they need at any time.
Great, thank you, John.
I get complaints on Minor Street about people parking and then down by where the horseshoe pit is.
I am happy to look at it. If there's some specific areas that we need to look at, we can change pretty quickly. That's one thing that I would, uh, encourage all council members. If you hear a complaint about parking or if there's a residential area that. People feel need to be protected, we can get that work done pretty quickly. I'm happy to talk to, um. To you or to the resident if there's an issue and we can start looking at how we do that. There are some places where it gets a little bit tight because we have commercial and residential uses really tied together, like especially between fifteenth and seventeenth on Colorado. But we have currently have protected residential parking all the way to Ninth on Colorado. We have talked about expanding it that way a little bit, or, um, if we need to. Around the Argo area, could, there, it's mostly is residential parking only over there. But this is something that we should, if there is something, we can, we can move pretty quickly to, to look at that and figure out a solution.
Yeah, but, but, you know, for the dirt to parking. How do you tell? My cars parked there or somebody from our town's parked, parked around the house?
If it's in the residential zone, then the, the car needs to be registered into the Interstate system. And so they have a database of all license plates that are registered. And they can look it up on their mobile device through a secure connection to their software. So they can either take a picture of the license plate or they can enter it manually. That will tell them if it's a resident vehicle or if it's a vehicle that's outside of our system. If it's a vehicle from outside of our system, um, there's a couple of options. One, it could be a resident's guest. And we don't limit resident guests whatsoever. So we want to make sure that we promote, you know, one of the things that came up a lot is. I have a, I'm a caretaker for my mother who lives in the residential zone. I need to come see her when I need to come see her. So for systems like that, we've really tried to make sure that, that we don't impact the quality of life of residents from people visiting their house or having a birthday party. Usually what people do is they send me a text and they're like, hey, I'm having a party or whatever. And I'll either get their license plates or if it's a really short event, I might just say, if you get a ticket. Uh, for this event, let me know for this window and I'll make sure that it goes away. Um, because these are not quite the same as regular tickets in the residential zone. We're just really trying to promote. Healthy and positive community impacts there. So that's kind of how we manage it currently. There's always probably a better way to do it, but. Um, so far, that's been pretty effective. A lot of residents didn't want to go through the trouble of having to register every single vehicle, every single time that visits their house. But they really don't have a mind, a problem just telling me, you know, we have this happen at the Elks Lodge quite a bit too, if there's a memorial or some other event. So we just try to maintain a really positive and, um, contextually sensitive approach to managing that, those, those problems. Yeah, we do have, the visitor centers have come up a couple of times lately. We, we've talked about.
Minor all the way down and then back.
Yeah, Minor Street, Minor Street east of the bridge is all residential parking. There's a small area of commercial parking by the clinic, which is really for the bus staying more than anything else. And then the visitor's center is not currently patrolled by Interstate, but it could be. We've also discussed having Interstate start patrolling CRC Park to make sure that the vehicles parked there are, uh, using that park. Yeah, that's something. We would like to, you know, one thing that we've discussed that I didn't put in the staff report, but is something I think is a good council decision. We've talked about starting to charge for parking in the Highway one oh three lot, which is the, the lot across from the high school on the east side of one oh three. Right when you are heading up one oh three. That lot is really frequented by, uh, bicyclists and other people, but it's a good amount of parking that could be, you know, we could charge a different rate structure or something like that too, but. Um, this is kind of an ongoing conversation is where should the parking be and how should we manage it? We do have some free parking too. There's some resources, especially on the east end off of Colorado Boulevard. Uh, right to the north of where the fire station is and also over by the hot springs that is free parking and is available. Right now to anyone. And making sure that we have, um, good signage at points that parking is important as well.
That's where I see people parking, walking downtown.
Yeah, that's allowed.
Yeah, there's a lot of free parking. Uh, there at the hot springs, it's basically the middle of a swimming pool. Uh, and going north, I, I'm guessing there must be twenty spaces that are free.
I'm, I agree. I think you're correct in the number. And we do want to make sure those are public spaces, so. We want to make sure we, we, you know, especially with the, the paid parking, we do want to make sure you can still park somewhere in the city if you need to. And having those resources available is good. Managing them for bicycle riders and things like that, people sitting there for long periods of time is still important, even if we do have free parking. And that's something that if we have a, if we're seeing an issue, especially in any one of those areas. I can start having the ambassadors look and do counts and we can get some data to figure out what needs to happen there.
All right. Any more questions for Jonathan?
Oh, yes, sir.
Couple comments. Um, I, I also agree with the alternative one. Um, Morrison has a half hour free time and, um, you go up to the machine, you plug it in. Um, a little receipt comes out, tells you what time you need to be back to, uh, before you would get a ticket. I find that the people who are truly coming in for that free half hour, uh, that's what they're there for. If they're there to gain the system. I think most of them are smart enough to just put in the, uh, the time that they're going to be there. But I, I go with the first out, you know, with the alternative one. Also, if I remember right, uh, when the parking program was presented. It was recommended at that time by an individual that we have a separate, uh, a separate fund for it. Uh, I don't believe that individual called it an enterprise fund, but I think that person had foresight to suggest what you guys are doing now. Uh, and I think it's a good idea to keep the money separate.
Yes, sir. The money is tracked separate now. It's just in its own line item that nothing else touches. And so we can track that money through there if you'd like to see. Kind of the history of that specific line item. But I think the enterprise fund is, if we're going to operate this program, it's the appropriate way to do it for the future. The other thing I just want to note is Morrison modeled their program after Idaho Springs, so they literally just took our program and built it in Morrison. Though half hour free is a great thing and honestly, I really. I like that aspect of our program because I think it really is good for all the people of our city. But we have, we have given too many citations that I think are inappropriate. Because of it, because people are just not understanding the part about registering their, their license plate. So that was what, that was kind of my intention in trying to shift away from that. But, you know, I know that there's. You know, this is not a case to reinvent the wheel. So if there's a, a good way to do this, I'm happy to explore other alternatives.
All right. Any more questions for Jonathan? Eddie?
So I hear a consensus on moving forward with alternative one.
Yep.
Uh, doing away with thirty-minute free parking. And, uh, also expanding our fifteen-minute, uh, free spots. Which can serve well for pickup and takeout and loading and unloading and that sort of thing.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, uh, so council, uh, we'll see on the agenda next week, uh, the resolution from Carmen to establish the, uh, enterprise. Uh, fund for parking.
And also the, uh, the fee rate increase.
Uh, we, um, talked about that internally, I think as far as implementation. Yeah, it could be next week, but we're thinking May first. We want to make sure that we get the word out.
I got you. I got you.
And then it's rolled out smoothly, but, um, it, you're right, uh, council member, it would be appropriate.
But if we put it in there and just had the delay start on a certain day.
Yeah, to have it as a formal action item, I, I do think that makes sense.
And then you're ready to go. You don't have to come back to us.
Make the effective date May first. So we can certainly make that an action item next week.
Good. Get out of the way.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Kate. That's good. Um, anything else?
Jonathan, thank you very much, especially for coming in on vacation.
Get out of here.
Thank you. You know, I love to talk about parking, so.
Enjoy yourself.
Yeah.
Have fun. Did the Rockies win?
We didn't go today. We went swimming instead, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Enjoy your vacation. All right. The last thing tonight is, uh, street projects update. John Bardoni.
Uh, mayor and council, all you have to do is just approve a lot of money and we can get some work. That's simple, really. So these are just kind of a synopsis of the, the roadways that have been completed, the projects. And then the roads that, the streets that, following the streets that need to be reconstructed. So kind of what we're looking for, really, my recommendation is that we. We budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for design and, uh. For streets, whatever streets that the council so desires. I think that we want to do that because we, we have a better chance of getting. Grants and funding if we have the project that is ready to go. Because that's usually, typically the first thing they ask you is, do you have a shovel-ready project? And my recommendation is Virginia Canyon and Virginia Street. And I, we, we budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for that. We were kind of guessing and hoping that that's enough. I'm not sure what that's going to be, to be honest with you, for, uh, engineering for that project. I'm sorry?
Is that including water and sewer?
Yes. Yeah, all of these streets, other than Minor Street downtown. Do need water and sewer. Minor Street downtown, like, uh, Mr. Boland. do need water and sewer. Minor Street downtown, like uh Mr. Boland said, does need service, water service lines. They were never replaced when the the main was replaced. So it's old steel lines that are in Minor Street under the sidewalks. And if you can see, uh last summer, um on fifteenth, we had to dig that street up because of leaking water lines. So definitely those need to be done. And the reason that I uh recommend Virginia Canyon, I know it wasn't on HDR's most wanted list when they did that in twenty eighteen, is the condition of the sewer line up there is just absolutely horrendous. We're not even sure what it's made of, but if you dig it up, you can just take the pipe and snap it in your fingers.
I'm not gonna do, how did the new houses, though, not new houses, how the, how do the houses that were remodeled, like extensively remodeled, tie into our line if they're so bad? Like the, I mean, in particular, there's one that did an extensive amount of work up there.
They're just tying in the new line into the old line.
And I mean, there was no way to tell that that was like a bad thing to do or well, wasn't a deterrent or anything?
By the municipal code, if you remodel your house or you replace your sewer line, it it goes from your house to the main.
Right.
So there's been numerous people that have that have replaced that complete sewer.
Okay.
There's actually been a lot of people on Minor Street and somewhere in Colorado Boulevard that have had to go in and replace their sewer lines from the new line that we put in into their houses. So that's how that worked.
Well, that that went up and down Colorado, too. That was one of the advantages for some people. But what what Chuck was saying is whatever this material is, I'm, I, John, I just really want Wall Street to get done. I mean, I swear, it's like
I know you.
It's fifty years that it's never been redone, so I just want that to be on record. But again, I mean, I also don't want sewer wastewater running down Virginia Canyon into the city either, so.
We have a lot of need.
I know.
We don't have a lot of uh of the money to do it. Virginia Canyon, we've had issues with that sewer line. A couple of them earlier this week, or not this week, but earlier this year, that I did not know if we were going to be able to get them without digging up the street. Because there was a lot of rock and sediment in that sewer line. And to me, that tells me that something is missing, and you're just jetting water, uh dirt into the sewer line. Also, the water line that goes up Virginia Canyon sits in mine waste, which is corroding the outside of the pipe in.
Is it in the the covert? Where 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 is the line? Is it, where is it coming?
It's just buried directly.
I don't know.
So unfortunately, that's another one that needs to be done. And like you say, Wall Street's not the only one that hasn't been done in fifty years.
Oh, I, I, it's the only one I've lived on for twenty-two.
Montane, since it was built.
Right.
They all have.
I think Wall Street's been there longer than Montane, just for the record, we're going down that way.
It probably is.
Carolyn Snow said, I could say this out loud, that since they've been here for fifty-two years, Wall Street has never been improved on the east side. So that's a, that's a lifelong resident there.
It is. It is really horrendous.
Well, I did just, I mean, it doesn't matter because I don't need the money to show this is gonna be a solution, but at four thirty in the morning, when we got the big snow, our neighbor um alerted us that somebody was like trying to get up the street and that our cars were there. And then he was precariously falling into that person's house. I don't know that that's ever gonna be a solution. I don't know what you would do.
I don't know. That would ever be a solution, even if you rebuilt the street.
I don't know. I mean, I just went over that. It, I don't even know it, but.
But John, I really appreciate three hundred thousand dollars and having at least a couple shovel-ready projects for grant money as it comes out.
Um the only other question, and Andy and I kind of discussed this, is I'm not, and quote me, correct me if I'm wrong. In our purchasing rules, we don't necessarily have to get multiple bids on engineering and design. Um we have had pretty good success with HDR in all the other projects that we did. So I don't, and it's up to council if you want me to pursue multiple.
These are the guys that are already been doing our roads for a while?
Yes.
I mean, it kind of makes sense to go with the people that are familiar with the craziness that's underground.
And they're the ones, and I can send anybody that wants that uh. What do you call that from HDR? It was the uh.
The bid, alright.
No, it was the street assessment.
Oh, yeah.
Uh it's a huge file, huge.
You guys have been doing this uh since, for twenty years, this has been done.
If council recommends it, then we can talk to HDR and and try and get an estimate on what streets we could afford to get engineering for.
John, is a three hundred thousand gonna carry us right now, or is it something that we wait? I know.
Unfortunately, we don't know.
No, I know, we don't know.
Right now, with the way things are, I have no idea.
And I know John stepped off. Is this any of the money that they're talking about for infrastructure improvements? Would we be able to, is this is this a part of our infrastructure that the federal government could help?
Well, this this three hundred thousand is what we budgeted out of uh general fund for the city.
But there's no money coming from the federal government or small towns for road in.
Or maybe.
We don't know. And if that was the case, what would be the next game if if we did do Virginias? For two Virginias?
Well, I mean, if we try and get the money to help them reconstruct it.
Does that federal money go to the governor that he's, he he decides what township's, how do you get it?
That's my understanding, that it goes to the state, and then the state will decide maybe how to divvy it up between all the counties. And if it goes to the, I don't know that it'll go to the county and into the city or how that will work, honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
I do not know. So with that, I mean, we can move forward with Virginia Canyon and Virginia Street. The other question is, we did budget um five hundred thousand dollars if you want to spend it again, temporary asphalt that won't be through there for a long period of time, like the east half of Wall Street or um any of the other streets.
It it is better. The Band-Aids are there. They're holding for right now. So I guess we'll see how the end of winter goes, and then I think we probably can get through to fall, and maybe then if we need to talk about it, we can talk about it then.
I do want to spend a lot of that money. I mean, there's a lot of the avenues and other streets that that do need some work on. And we can do more on the streets, but if there's not a particular street that you don't want to
Attempting.
attempt to put a Band-Aid on. Um one recommendation that I had was Center Alley downtown. I'm sure if you've driven it, it's nothing but one big pothole from one end to the other.
I've actually had a few people ask me, I mean, I've, of course, I argued that my street was more important than their street, but um that is very, very bad. And I, and it is level, and maybe the, maybe the temporary stuff would last longer because it's not getting ground up. So, I mean.
And we're, we're only talking maybe an inch and a half overlay or something like that.
I think might save some suspension now.
Well, I was on the dotted streets, you saw the horse feet, you know, you, you know, the guys have come up on Pine Slope and done done the best job they could with the equipment they have. Um I don't know if they're like, I'm just curious if there's a different piece of equipment that we can use. Some, you know, they've got that black asphalt, maybe for all over the city. And that the the, what do you call it, the front loader, whatever it is, tries to find it down. Any way of doing it with a steamroller, and I I know, I know to to go that, you gotta start digging down against foundation, but it just seems like he's he's really wasting his time. Um you know, it's good for, you know, I'm sure there's others, others, I'm not picking that out, but as long as she can turn it on. I'm sure there's other, other proposals that are similar to that, but.
Well, I mean, that's, that's another one that that would benefit out of a, off of a thin overlay on it.
What in the developer that's gonna, I I mean, is that, is that something that the developer is gonna be responsible for when they put those homes up there? I mean, I personally was a hundred percent that the developer should be putting a new road road in for Pine Slope at their expense and not at the expense of the city.
Any, any improvements that are required by a development are required to be paid for by the developer.
So because, I mean, any heavy equipment that goes up there to put in those homes is gonna destroy whatever you guys have going on up there. So there's no reason why the city should pay for that.
There's no proof of by the developer.
I I just have heard things to the great minds, so.
But anywhere, even the football field or any of, any improvements that they're going to do, if approved, is going to be required by them to do.
Good, that reminds me of any permission of that.
Streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, all of those are their responsibility.
That sounds good. There's a bright side.
Pretty much all I have, pretty much self-explanatory. What's on it?
So is council uh good with the recommendations and direction as presented as far as, you know, we'll of course bring back uh what the the proposals are for the design and engineering. We'll also bring back proposal for what can be done as far as overlay and what streets as would include. Um, you know, and I, we, um, we're pretty skeptical how far five hundred thousand is gonna go for overlay with the, you know, oil prices. A little more optimistic on design and engineering. I think you could probably get some, apparently, we can make some good headway there, so. But if council's good with that, uh.
So we're agreeing to go with the the firm you're using? Is that what you're asking?
And also just moving forward with the recommendation, too.
Yeah, I thought it was really good recommendation.
Yeah.
You you can feel like it's okay to use the same firm? Yeah, I think that that's a running curve that we don't get to frame that.
Okay. All right, we'll talk to him tomorrow and start getting a quote and bring that to council.
Thank you, John.
Um asphalt, of course, probably isn't gonna be till May or something like that when weather warms up and they start running the asphalt. That was all I have.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else before we adjourn? Andy, you got anything else?
Uh I don't think so. Just a reminder that we do have the um uh council retreat next Monday. Uh starting at nine o'clock, we'll have uh burritos, coffee and tea at the start of soft and um and they'll have lunch around eleven thirty or twelve, and we'll, we should be done by two.
All right.
Well, there's no regretting term limits.
You probably crashed the party, Bob. Hey, well, thank you very much, everyone, for uh for coming tonight, and uh we'll see you next week.
Andy, I have the paperwork for you, too.
Oh, um one other item. The uh the workshop tonight with the fleece teeth is postponed to next week.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Six P M before the seven?
Probably be six P M is my guess. Uh six P M, um couldn't be here tonight, uh family matter, and uh so we're planning that right now at six, uh before the regular meeting.
All right, well, I hope everything's okay. I already asked the question. This was a riffraff, I thought it was best. By the way, I think they just.